In terms of people? Yeah, that's everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have an eight fifty-five cut off because that's what my babysitter leaves.
Well, you're the chair. You're the chair.
Seven fifty-five?
That's not.
Seven fifty-five?
Seven fifty-nine, sure.
You have the agenda?
I do, yes.
You were maybe just hoping to get that.
No, I discussed it all again because I had last month in here and I didn't want them to get all mixed up and yeah. Alright, so I see the right one on top because now I got them all out of order. I have the intended. Okay, now I'm. Oh, there we go, okay. Alright, I will call this meeting to order. Agenda review, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Nope. You look like you're debating. You're good?
Well, I do want to bring up one, one sort of main thing. There's, there's a number of public hearings scheduled for tonight for the first three. So these are all subdivision cases. You've seen three of these. And in the three top one, the three sort of in order here are scheduled public hearings. They were, they were notified in the Ithaca Journal for them. And the, the anticipated board act for tonight is final action on the first two and then for the one ninety Hill Road subdivision, it's, it's a preliminary plot review, but there's action on the preliminary class. I, I do want to let you all know that one, we did not get out notification to neighbors. So we got out the, the public, the notice in the Ithaca Journal and did not get out the notification to neighbors on these three, these three subdivision actions. So I've let the applicants know that the subdivision ordinance does allow at the planning board's discretion to take, for the planning board to take action on them despite the neighbors not being notified. If, if it was the case of not being notified in the Ithaca Journal, no, you have to cancel the public hearing and just kind of start all over again. So it's completely up to the planning board to, to take action tonight or not. I would advise, what you do is open the public hearing tonight because it's already been advertised in the Ithaca Journal and on our website. And continue it until the September seventeenth meeting. That way the town doesn't have to re-advertise it again. It costs a lot of money to post in the Journal. But to continue to September seventeenth, in that time, we would get notification to neighbors out like by next week. And so that, so that, you know, that, that, that requirement is met. And then the board could take action at the Sept-, at the September seventeenth meeting. So that's my only addition to the agenda, like clarification on, on these first three.
Okay.
Does that hold them up at all? The applicants?
Well, it might.
Two, yes.
Because the reason I ask that is, you know, is there any way we could do a contingency? If it's going to hold them up?
Um, I don't, I wouldn't. Contingent on what? I mean, just public government?
Right, if anybody who was notified wants to bring something formally, then they can do that in September. Otherwise, it's passed. I, I'm, I know that's a little clumsy. But if it, you know, keeps somebody from getting held up or having their plans delayed, then, then maybe we should consider it.
Well, I've already, I, I heard from Carl Mattio for the first case and he said it doesn't, um, it doesn't impact kind of his timeline. I didn't hear back from Adam Cartman about his timeline for that.
I didn't, I, I, I didn't see the notice, but I'm already two months behind because I started this three months ago and wasn't aware that I was supposed to come back to the meeting in person three months ago. So I've already missed two months. This is now the third month. And I'm not thinking my neighbors are going to care. If it's not required, I would love, like to proceed. Because we're trying to sell the property. And this will hold us up. So I would love to see it expedited in a reasonable manner if possible.
And then for the one ninety Hill Road subdivision, so this is the preliminary flat review. And, and the next month with the schedule for a final flat review, assuming that nothing gets, needs to be changed from this time. So that timeline isn't impacted because the board could do preliminary and final approval at next month's meeting with, with that hearing. So.
We have to do. Yeah, I guess we could.
So the public.
Either we could, we could, I wasn't sure, we could do prelimin-, close preliminary without closing the public hearing. But either way, if we do both in the same month or do one now and one later, it's the same timeline.
Right.
So it doesn't matter.
And, and, and I guess, Adam, I'm not quite sure, it sounds like that you were, you, you've been delayed. I, I think this is kind of, this has gone through exactly as, as it was planned. I'm just confused by, by your comment. Oh, you're, you're muted. Adam, you're.
You're on mute.
Oh, um, three months ago, we went through this process and it was going to come to the town council and I wasn't aware that I was supposed to be present at that meeting, so I didn't log on. So it got tabled and then the next month, um, I hadn't, again, I hadn't been notified yet. So we, we lost two months in which I simply didn't show up because I didn't know I needed to. And now it's the third month later. So, I mean, this is kind of a routine thing. We're just trying to do a minor subdivision for ten acres. Plotted out and it's been in the Ithaca Journal. Now the neighbors weren't notified. Although I had an estate sale at the house the other day and lots of neighbors came by and we told people about what's going on and people asked about it. I didn't hear any objections, but anyway, I would just like to continue to move this forward in a reasonable manner. I'm not trying to rush it, but I know I'm going to be answering to my sister and others like, how many months does it take to do a simple minor subdivision?
So with that in mind, would you like me just to, you want me to read over the clause in the ordinance that just talks about that there's this, would that help? I mean, if I just sort of read this paragraph here as we're kind of talking about this. And, you know, we could even just have this into the record too. It's just good. So there's, you know, notice requirements for, for different types of subdivisions by posting a sign for standard subdivisions such as Andrew Thernier's newspaper by mail or delivery. And so section two eleven four states failure to post signs prior to the sketch plan conference pursuant to part one of this section or failure to notify neighboring property owners of a public hearing pursuant to part three of the section shall not be a jurisdictional defect and any action taken by any board, employer, agent of a town in connection with such activities shall not be nullified or voidable by reason of the failure to post signs or notify neighboring property owners. However, such failure to post or notify may be grounds, should the planning board or town board in its discretion so determined, to decline to conduct a scheduled sketch plan conference or public hearing. Failure to publish notification of public hearing pursuant to part two of the section that relates to posting in the Ithaca Journal shall be considered a jurisdictional defect and shall require postponement of such public hearing until such time as notice is properly published.
Just one question. When you put out the Dambi newsletter, were these mentioned in there?
Um, I don't believe, at least not the hearing, the way that, and I talked to Joel about this the other day too. The, it, it's making us think that maybe we should ask for these applications like six weeks in advance because by the, when I write my article.
Right.
So it's tomorrow, like I'll write tomorrow's article that gets published in September. I don't quite know yet. I, I, we might know if there's a public hearing scheduled for the September meeting.
Right.
But we won't know. We give people three weeks before planning board meetings to submit. So somebody could submit in, in a week and then that wouldn't be at least notified in the, in the newsletter for September.
I would not suggest waiting six weeks. Remind people to apply to when they're going to come to the board. That's, that seems like too much. That's a lot of them waiting around.
Is there any possibility if there was a forum of us who were willing to stop even quick and approve it before almost, can that happen?
Oh, yeah.
A special meeting due to lack of neighbors?
Yeah, we just.
You certainly could, the planning board can always schedule a special meeting. This, this can, you know, if it's a quorum, we're going to be there. You're, you're suggesting that if, if we were to get notification out, let's say tomorrow, it hits deal with mailboxes by the end of the week, um, and then it's a meeting scheduled. They're supposed to, uh.
I mean, I guess I'm just wondering if we decided to compromise position here.
Yeah, I'd do a halfway in between. That would be like two, that'd be basically two weeks from today.
So September third, that is, is it the holiday weekend, September?
Yeah, it is. It's the holiday weekend. The day before the first day of school.
Is, is that an option, the, the board to be willing to? You know, it's completely up to, up to you all. There's, the, the choices are either, I think.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah. Because we're not spurring.
I'm nearby, I can come up here or maybe, I don't know if we can do it on the phone. Or.
You have to assume.
We'll wait, have a meeting in person.
Have to have at least four in person.
Right.
And then anybody else can be online. You have to go four in person.
Right.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. You know, it helps out the applicant.
So the options are either that the board can take action tonight legally. You could continue the public hearing all the way through the regularly scheduled September seventeenth meeting. Or you could find a, a hybrid of those, which I would be suggesting that a, a middle meeting on, say, that Tuesday, September third.
Which case we'd basically just close the public hearing and take a vote.
Right, it could be a, a ten minute meeting.
Yeah, we just would all pick a time we could stop by and take care of it.
So would neighbors then submit any comments to you?
Right.
And you would report them to us?
Right. So I, I think if we get that note.
And we would just notify them that we're having a special meeting on that date at whatever time.
So if we get letters out tomorrow in the mail, I think they could hit people's mailboxes by Friday, Saturday. That gives the, the seven days required to, yeah, to, to then get and say there's a special meeting, seven PM on Tuesday, September third.
I would make that work.
Are there enough of us that think we have enough flexibility to do that on a Tuesday?
I can do it.
Six thirty in the morning.
Yeah. Not for me. He said six thirty in the morning.
If he gets to school.
Can you do it? You can do it soon.
I can do it.
It can be done. It can be, it doesn't have to be done in person.
It does, or people have to meet in person. Yeah.
May I ask one question? What constitutes neighbors that have to be notified? How wide is that scope? Just out of curiosity.
It's, it's a, the required area is five hundred feet from the boundary of your property. And so the planning board secretary just has software and she pulls that up using county address.
Five hundred feet. Okay, thank you.
So is there a motion? Is that, is that split up to you?
Or are we doing it for just this applicant or just all of them today?
Well, that's also.
We didn't even get to the applicants really.
But it sounded like a couple of them said it wasn't really going to make a difference for them.
To, right. I mean, could, we could vote to do it for the first two. I think the third one doesn't matter because it's on the same schedule either way.
Okay, got it.
So we could open that one and leave it open. And then close it and do the vote next month because it's that going to change their timeline.
Yeah.
Well, it's anything that touches you. Doesn't have to be their house. It's their property line touching your property line within five hundred feet. Right. It's the parcels involved.
So for you to be anybody around, yeah, Curtis and across the street from Hill, and even the state of New York would get notified.
Okay, so the agenda probably won't. Well, I guess the final actions would change. So we won't take final actions
Right, but you could.
On the able employee, but we'll keep the public hearing on the agenda. And then schedule a special meeting on the third. Okay.
Does the board want to make a motion for that and just to, just make sure there's, it'd be good to know that people can make that.
That we call a special meeting on the, the third of September. The actual time to be determined.
Well, let's just say seven, we'll just, the same time.
The same time.
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to do the night. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I can't, I, I could do it at six thirty AM or.
I was just blowing smoke, no, it's six thirty, no.
Um, right, it's the first Tuesday.
Make sure you count those later.
September. Seven PM and we need at least fourteen people.
Right, no, that's, that's not, you're right Cindy, yeah. So the first Tuesday, uh, this is clear.
Okay.
Burman?
Yes.
Holbert?
Yep.
Cal?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Fryger?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Just to be clear, was that just for four oh five Troy Road or is that for one sixty-four Yable, half four oh five Troy?
I think we might as well do one sixty-four and four oh five.
Okay.
Still for both.
The first two.
I mean, right now we're calling it a special meeting, right?
Yeah, we'll be here.
I mean, I think it should be both, but we can decide that even by the end, right? Right, this is just to say we're not.
Yeah, we can review.
We can say exactly what we're going to do.
By the end of this meeting.
And send out the letters. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because all the emotion should be about is having a special meeting, right?
And by the end of this meeting, we'll determine.
But it's, but it's for, we should just do both.
Yeah.
Yeah, either way, yeah.
Both, but not all three.
Okay. So Ed, you missed, I won't go the whole, over that, but I, I was saying that we posted in the Ithaca Journal, which is an absolute requirement, but we didn't notify neighbors for the first three subdivisions, um, just, that was an oversight. So the board could still take action tonight. Or kick it to the following meeting, but as you all saw, we just did a little hybrid approach.
Right, that makes sense.
Good suggestions.
And so do we need to attend that special meeting? I'm not quite following that.
No, you don't have to. Right? I mean, you can, we'll be making the action, but it's not, I don't think it's required. We'll probably have all questions today.
So we should stay for the agenda because you might have questions now. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Please, please and thank you.
And you're going to open the public hearing since.
Yes, I will open the public hearings tonight and then we can close them next. Or next, yeah, next month in the special. Okay, any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay. Privilege of the floor. Uh, if anyone would like to speak, we ask you, please hold it to three minutes. And if it's specific to one of these property reviews, hold it until the public hearing, seeing as how we're having public hearing on. I guess all but the last one. Any requests for privilege of the floor? Okay, moving on. Approval of the minutes for just May and June? Okay, May and June. Hopefully everyone figured out how to find them now that we're in August. Anyone like to make a motion? Everybody read, we're all good. You have enough votes. I make a motion to approve the minutes from May and June. All second.
Burman?
Yes.
Holbert?
Yep.
Cal?
I'm abstaining from May because I wasn't here, but yes to June.
Uh, Davis?
Yes.
Fryger?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes.
Ma?
Yes. Would you like to give us a town board liaison reports, Leslie?
Maybe should have done a proposal before.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Anyway, uh, I'll try and do this. The, the town has begun prepping for the two thousand twenty-five budget. And, and we continue to analyze the ARCA fund spending choices. Uh, which, that total is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's, it's hopefully it takes.
Do you think Leslie could come closer to the speaker? So we can hear her?
It's this, this is the speaker now. Anyway, hopefully it'll take some pressure off the town's budget for the next year or two or three. For their plans to revisit the Dambi's comprehensive plan, hopefully will begin sometime maybe at the end of, the beginning of next year. That's due for an overhaul. Residence change, what's important to residence change, some goals are met, some goals are obsolete. And I'm sure it's an effort for which the planning board will be taking the lead.
Is that your opinion?
No, my opinion is at the end. A, a huge effort was made to revise our zoning law. And we continue to become aware of some parts that need tweaking. And that effort has begun and will continue. My current and previous planner identified the need for us to revise and update the town's subdivision regs. I hope we can start working on those in the coming year to bring them in line with goals that will perhaps be clarified during the comp plan revision. While the town attempts to put together a package, which, you know, comp plan zoning and subdivision regs, no small thing. Hopefully putting together a package that makes sense. I hope we can avoid getting bogged down in the criticism that often comes our way. Especially when we try to adhere to laws, regs that we are charged with following. While we also recognize the need to be considerate when it comes to situations that impact the lives of Dambi residents. And I just saw you guys do that. Thank you.
Alright. Onto our development reviews. So first up, one sixty-four Yable Road. Actions will be secreted for nomination and opening public hearings. We will defer the final action to September third. Um, this is a load into the residential, unlisted seeker minor subdivision into two. I think we looked at this one last time. With previous lot divisions being re-divided for sale to, I think the neighbor, this was the intention.
I can just pull it up here.
It won't let you on the call though.
It says host of the disabled screen check. Can you, uh, grant me permission, if you just go to participants? Say permission to share. So this is the, the final plat, uh, before, there was a, I think about twenty-year-old survey. Um, so Carl went out and hired T G Miller and they produced the survey. It's, it looks exactly the same again there. So he was in parcel A and a number of years ago, they, they acquired parcel B and combined it with their lot and now they're they're just subdividing the exact same area as the previous one and selling it to the neighbor to the left or west. And that neighbor's intention is to keep it as a separate tax parcel.
Any questions for we review seeker? Nope, okay.
And one thing about the seekers, if you recall, there were a lot of sort of inconsistencies with a few of the secrets. I'll, I'll pull up. The updated seeker form, the, the part one. So I, I I feel like every time I read about seeker, I learn something new. So it's just, it'll be great. So all I did was change that the total acreage of the site is five point five. I think it was just a little bit unclear to see. And total acreage is zero. So everything's the same. I checked the residential box. But then the biggest things, and this was kind of on all of them that I updated. This is the language that the state asks you to use. So when it's just a subdivision, they suggest you just put no in these three categories, nine, ten and eleven, and just say And just say, the project does not need to meet energy code, project does not require water supply and project does not require waste water treatment. So this is the exact language from the DEC for subdivision when there's no development plan. So you'll see this, this language will be updated on all the, on all these subdivisions here. And I think that was it, I think I checked suburban for typical habitats, otherwise. And then you'll see that my. I don't think I gave you a part two, I just, I have that up here. It's just, it's this. Make sure that one too. That's recommending that there's no significant environmental concerns. And that's what the resolution in front of you reflects.
Okay. Typically read it, should I read it just for consistency and record? Okay, and unless anyone has a change, we'll leave them all as notes. Will a proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use or zoning regulation? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of the CEA, which we don't have any? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private waste? Sorry, water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will the proposed action result in an increase or the potential of erosion, flooding or drainage? And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Okay, so seeing no, we'll move to the next section of. No adverse or little to no adverse environmental impacts, just goes out to language. So then we just need a motion. To accept the resolution, which we'll give a number later. Of this termination of environmental significance.
Resolution, yeah, most.
One second. Whoever you do it.
Urban?
Yes.
Over?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Breder?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. For the next meeting.
Right, right. Oh, yeah, I, I, I mean, I'll have you sign the part two, the part three.
Um, I forget, do we need an action to open public hearing or I just open public hearing? Okay, I will open the public hearing. In regards to any comments or questions regarding the subdivision of the properties. Does anyone care to make any comment at this time? No, okay. Then we will leave that open for the September third meeting. And make our final determination at that time. Assuming we have no comments from the neighbors. Or they can come and say, sounds fantastic and we'll take that too. Okay. Uh, thank you, Carl. We'll. Give you final determination in two weeks.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, four oh five Troy Road. Okay, so again. Um, secret determination, public hearing, we'll defer final action for two weeks and vote then. Again, this one's rule one, unlisted minor subdivision. Um, I don't think, I assume there's no change in the. Action on the easement that takes more time than this, so I'm sure that's ongoing, okay? Uh, is there any other change from what we've seen? No, okay. Anyone have any further comments or questions on this one? Okay. So we do speaker or. Thanks, did you change this one too? I don't remember.
Oh, yes. I think I, all three of them I.
You just added those.
Right.
Okay.
Would you like me to be present for the special meeting?
It's not required. I, I assume unless someone comes out. With very strong objections, it will be a very short, uneventful meeting.
The same, same notes as the last one. Uh, just project does not need to meet energy code or require wastewater supply or require, I'm sorry, water supply or require wastewater treatment.
And then so on the wetlands is at the back, so that's why we have that now. One second now. The wetland was like back in the area of the east, the potential easement.
What's? What you're saying, when it's just.
Where the?
Check the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, there's, and there's water bodies too in the, in the north part of the property.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So similar part two as the one before, just. No or small impact may occur.
All the same questions, do I don't need to read it again? No, okay. Anyone would like to make a motion to accept the no or small impacts? And we'll get to our resolution.
Do you want to use my draft resolution too? I mean, you could just, if I'd like my.
Yeah.
The draft resolution would.
Yes.
Over?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
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 We, I will open the public hearings, anyone that has comment on the property today? No, okay, we will leave that open, revisit and close in two week. And. Make an action on final determination at that time. Right. Um, should we, I guess the only thing is do you, in terms of. Making the next meeting expedited, don't anyone have any? Comments on the resolution, just so we get it kind of all ready to go and make it fast and simple next time around? Looks like no, okay.
Yeah, some straightforward.
Okay, all right, just make sure. Okay, now on to one ninety Hill Road, thank you, Adam.
And Andrew, if you are going to speak, just make sure, because it has the pickups on the mics that you could, you could cover it up.
Okay, so we also looked at this as a sketch flat review last month. I think there was some conversation about whether we need to. Designate buildable area or not, and no one really seemed to think that was particularly necessary for the type of action we're taking. More that the standard subdivision is. We're not reviewing it, it's like a developer review, it's more. More, uh, I don't know what the word is, I would use, but they're, they're not planning development at this time, it's just a subdivision. So for tonight's actions, we're looking at opening the public hearing. I think because, so we can't do preliminary without a public hearing or we could do preliminary?
You have to do it with a public.
Okay, okay, so we could.
The standard subdivision is, is different than a minor subdivision.
Right.
For whatever reason, but you have to hold a public hearing on the preliminary plat.
Okay.
You don't have to hold a public hearing on the final plat.
Okay.
Which is why you could continue the preliminary plat, public hearing from tonight into. September seventeenth meeting and then just take action on the preliminary and final plat at the same time.
Okay.
Especially since there weren't any comments from the last time, I mean, I think if this was, there were a lot of comments, you might want to stretch out the.
Right. Well, now that you said that, do they have to wait? Four weeks for their, their final or is the special? Is there like anything that says it would have to be?
No, because you're doing, you're doing the, the notice was for tonight, to do a public hearing tonight and you're here to review the preliminary plat. Subdivision ordinance just requires that there's just two different steps for preliminary and final. Whereas the minor subdivision, you can collapse the preliminary and final plat approval into one step. Because the preliminary plat review is happening tonight. You, you know, instead of just taking action tonight in the preliminary plat, because it seems like there's not substantive comments. Again, I think if there was, if, if there was a lot of hand wringing going on and about, there were issues, you might want to just. You know, have a few more meetings to kind of deliberate, but no, you're, you're doing the requirements of having a preliminary plat review tonight. And, and then the final plat review at, at the next meeting, so now this.
So that could also be the third and not the seventeenth if we wanted, okay?
The, okay, yeah, the seventeenth could, is the third meeting. If, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I'm saying like, would we have to hold the standard one or the final plat on the seventeenth or could the final be on the third?
Oh, uh, no, you should have, um.
Cause now that we're talking about it twice and holding over the public hearing.
Yeah.
Now I'm confusing myself.
I think to me, it feels like unless there's a reason that, that this other one needs to be done more quickly. We should leave it the way it is, since we're all coming in.
It was supposed to be on that date anyway. Right, okay.
I want to be sure what, what, what is being decided, just.
We'll leave the fine, I guess as of right now, we're leaving the final on the seventeenth.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, because that would have been normal course of action.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the subdivision ordinance is pretty clear, it breaks up the reviews instead of having them, having the town collapse them into one meeting.
Yeah.
And I, I feel like we don't want to make a precedence of speeding stuff up.
Right.
So we should just take.
Where make, where is?
That's where, where they need to be done quicker.
Right, we're doing the other because it was.
Right.
Yeah.
Clerical misstep.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, and the state, just on that, the, the state, the state's requirement is that there's either a one-step review for subdivisions or there's two-step. Dambi takes it even further and requires a third step for these types of subdivisions, so.
So is that why we're reviewing this the next year?
Uh, no, I, I think there's actually just some, there are just a number of.
Okay. We can talk about that in twenty twenty-five.
It's been brought up by all the planners that I can tell, going back to Subinas. And, well, I guess it was updated in twenty sixteen, but I will, I will, we'll, we'll work on that.
Table that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so on the preliminary plat. And we can also do the secret determination though, right?
Yeah, you can do that.
So we can do secret determination. And then if there are any comments on the preliminary plat that need to be incorporated for the final plat. We should address those so that they can have those ready for next month. So for anyone who was not here or anyone who was last month. Are there any additional or? New questions? Regarding the subdivision? For the client or the owner?
If I could just sort of add on to that too, that, because there were three of you not here. So with these standard subdivisions, the ordinance requires a resource map to be submitted. So I think the last one before this was on Miller Road, it was that property that went from Miller down to Formbrook. And there was a resource map and the, and the board conditioned part of the property to be a no build area. So that was the most recent one. So the applicant did submit, yeah, so Andrew did submit the, the resource map with this. And I have an extra copy here, a, a colored copy, because I asked, I wasn't sure if the three who weren't here. I don't know, I think you all have that or not, I. I might deliver some, but if you want to take a look at, at one of, you know, mine is blocking, but I don't have a good copy. But I can't pull it up on the map, let me, let me do that, I'll pull it up.
Right, that's one, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah. So I'll, I'll share this and then I can just go over all the things that are shown, because as often happens on maps, they just get a little cluttered and. It's oftentimes hard to exactly see what's going on. So this is the property. So what's being shown on this is, are, there's areas of slopes that are fifteen percent or greater. They're shown in hatched area. There's contour lines being shown, there's areas from the soil, from the. It's, it's from a soil survey about prime farmland and non-prime farmland or areas of, so non-prime soil. Those are the three major ones, so it was, it's slopes. And then prime farmland. And then having contours there. And then having contours there, and then using an area, you can obviously just see the, the boundaries of the, of the forest, and there's, there's, there's wet areas. I'm gonna creep. So we're using, using this resource map, um, the, the only last thing I'll add is just that the ordinance allows the, the board to, if you want, um, to take these resources and say, you know, here are building envelopes, or here's building area, and then here's areas that should just be, have no buildings whatsoever. Um, and so that happened on that, that subdivision on Miller, you know, if you read the ordinance, it's, it's clear that I think those types of regulations or, or no-build areas and, and conditioning a plat are, are really best used, I think, when it's a, a subdivision similar to, say, Old Town Village, Beardsley Lane, where there's the development going in, that's when I think those, this gets applied very well, and it works very well. When it's family property, when there's no, and, and there's no intention of developing it or anything, there's just a change in hands among the family, um. Again, the planning board still has that discretion, but it just might not be appropriate in this instance, but that's completely, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that's that's my take on it. It does back up to the Dandy Forest, so that forest that does come into the property is, you know, an extension of the the beautiful Dandy State Forests, um. Well, just kind of leave it there, important to talk about.
I'm concerned.
I mean, I, I agree with what you said about not putting limitations, because even um, if there were very sensitive areas, like, I mean, fifteen percent, over fifteen percent slopes is not incredibly terrible, um, but you know, you can still build something there very sensitively. So I just think it's a little odd for us to put limitations. I don't think it's necessary.
The, the other, the other person where we did, there, there was just much more of a sensitive area, that Horn, that Horn Brook overlays, which is so many.
There are a lot of overlay.
It's like every single overlay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's one dozen of them.
That was a really complicated parcel.
No, that was, that, you're right, um, that, that was the difference too, was that, right, there were, there was a Breitarian overlay.
Yeah.
Was, there was, uh.
Habitat corridor.
It was, it was federal wetlands, DEC wetlands, Habitat quarter, aquifer overlay, I think it was, I think David's note was, this is the area that the, the town is trying to protect.
Yeah. Well, then even higher up than the town, it was like states instead of, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, shall we open the public hearing? Does anyone have any comments on the public hearing? Go ahead, Rhonda, um. All right, I'll give you three minutes.
Uh, no, this is a hearing. No, it's not three minutes, it is not three minutes, sorry. So, I have lived here nearly fifty years, and I live near the Thernhares on South Dandy Road. I want to give you a little scenario of what's been going on. So let's say that you have a teenager, and the teenager wants to go to the movies on Saturday night with his friends. And you say to your teenager, well, you have to do all of your homework before you go. And you have to clean your bedroom, and you have to babysit your sister so I can go and do the grocery shopping. And the Saturday night comes, and none of this stuff is done. And yet, the teenager still wants to go to the movies. My opinion is, this is the way the Thernhares are. Uh, they do whatever they want to do until someone complains. And so what you have on this property is a perfect example of all of the awful stuff that have been done, uh, most of it, I believe, is without permit. And let me start off with, I don't think that this is a standard subdivision at all. Uh, notice that the DG Miller said they could not find a deed. So Andy Thernhair as owner, does he actually have a deed to this property? And how is he going to be able to divide this property if he doesn't have a deed? Another thing is that we have on this property, this is a single property. And we have, by my count, four houses plus a cabin. Where are the permits for the building of all of these structures? We also have something like sixteen, maybe I'm a little wrong, it's hard to tell from the design. But sixteen sheds, when you're only allowed four sheds per parcel. Let me keep going, if you're keeping track here. We have a commercial business that's being operated without any kind of permit on an R1 zone. So we have this commercial business being operated in an R1 zone. The commercial business is driving down South Danby Road, which is a class eight road, minor connector road illegally. Uh, we have them parking their trailers in the pull-off parking area on ninety-six B. Simply because they can do it with, until somebody complains about it, so this is another example of the Thernhares doing what they want to do. Um, we have the house on South Danby Road that belonged to the Thernhares and was an agricultural property with a barn, and they divided the barn off the property. And then turned the barn without any kind of permit into a residence. Again, another example of them doing what they want in violation of all code. So what I'm saying is everything that's on this parcel right now, that is in violation of code, needs to be removed. It absolutely needs to be dealt with, and for you to be talking about, oh, well, we'll let them build, no, no. They have enough stuff. They have absolutely enough stuff already. And they don't even have a deed, evidently. So, I'm telling you that I'm totally opposed to this until everything, all of the violations are corrected, and then they should come back with all the violations corrected. And then you should be considering whether or not you're going to divide the property. Thank you, maybe I even did it within three minutes.
Thank you, Rhonda. Would anyone else like to comment during public hearing?
Yeah, I've got one thing to say.
Yep.
If you would like to say it again, do any kind of zoning subdivision, and anything in DMV, several violations on never had subdivision. Everybody's gotta listen. Uh, the one thing I would say
Could we have the person come forward and speak into the speaker for the record?
Good evening, Rhonda.
Hello, Andy.
So, um, I, uh, I, I've never had this type of encounter with you before.
No.
Um, so you know, I've always tried to take care of you with your questions as best as possible, um.
The people on South DMV Road are not happy with your tractor trailers.
Okay, so you are mistaken about a number of different things here. So the parking lot and trailers being parked in the parking lot down there, those have nothing to do with us. We have plenty of room to park, if we want to park, we don't have a problem parking. Um, I'm not going to get into all of what you're
And you don't need to.
Concerned with, but as far as us driving by your house on South Dandy Road, we don't do business down that direction, so you don't see us on South Dandy Road. And, uh, I'm not saying we've never driven down South Dandy Road, but if you're, if you're upset about trucks going by your house, it's not us.
Um, it's also not part of site plan review.
Yeah, your, your, your accusations are so inaccurate, I'm not really going to address them all, but I just wanted you to know that, so that, I, obviously, you're upset at us, and we haven't done those things, so there's nothing I can do to help you there, but I'm sorry you're feeling that way, Rhonda. Um, that's about all I've got to say, really, I mean, you know, we're trying to take care of what we can take care of here.
Are you denying you have a commercial business in an R1 zone?
Yeah, I heard kind of.
You don't need to.
It's not a problem.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, thank you, it's good to see you, Rhonda.
So we're gonna leave public hearing open, because we didn't get neighbor notification, that will remain open. Um, and then we can review.
Next.
Next time we can do the final part, we can do seeker determination tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, so we can motion on the reviews next month, but we can do the seeker this. I knew that.
The amount of paper does. See, so you're doing seeker now, okay.
Please.
Yep. You had, you all had reviewed the part one last time, and it looks like my, I can pull up the part one, um. Looks like they, they didn't, the changes didn't save, or I definitely updated it to have the same language of the, but it's
On the water and.
Right, you just pulled that up to review. So for instance, I would need to update these zeros here to be one ninety-two, and the first one at one ninety-two, and the second third one, I've definitely updated this, but I don't know to where to copy it, so I can do that before the next meeting. Um, because I know if there were, then these three ones down here, nine thirty-one, and those. Let me actually hang on a second, I know that I did listen, it must be somewhere. Yeah, there they are. So one ninety-two, I added forest here for all the land uses that are on the property. And then, for the same, same thing as last time, then nothing else down here that needed to be changed. So the part two that I have should reflect that. No or small impact may occur. I'd like to get a little bit more information, but post-subdivision will not have adverse environmental impacts, is there no development plan with the subdivision, no land needs changing, no extension of public infrastructure. And the draft resolution reflects that.
Any changes to the proposed? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion on the draft resolution of environmental significance, or determination of environmental significance?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Firebird?
Yeah.
Unity?
Yes.
In line?
Yes.
Okay. So we will see you on the seventeenth, is that what it is? The seventeenth. For the termination on preliminary and final subdivision. You're a good one, thanks, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, last on our agenda is the one hundred Vandebogart Road parcel. Um, this is to review the flats, declare lead agency for seeker, and schedule public hearing for final plat on minor subdivision of one lots into two lots. Um, there was some so we're, we're starting now, but we're referring to January, is that what that was saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So there was a subdivision of this property, it was originally a three hundred acre property. In twenty eighteen, there was a subdivision, so dividing two lots from that three hundred. In twenty twenty-one, there was a subdivision, December twenty, twenty-one, to divide one of those lots into another two. The subdivision ordinance says that if you do a minor subdivision, um, where a parcel is less than ten acres, or I'm sorry, less than eight acres, within three years of the last one, it's called a standard subdivision, just like Thernhair property. So what Ray would like is to have you all review it tonight, write in the comments, feedback, that that he wouldn't get approval until after that three years lapse, now, the way the planning board's schedule works, it was, the last subdivision was approved in December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. The planning board meeting this year is before December twenty-first, you'd have to wait till January of next year to approve it. But, so that's that's where it stands.
Um, but it would still be okay, even though it's the next year.
Right, it was, it's just, it's just about three years, you know, we're just waiting at least three years.
But if we did standard, it could have potentially been done in October.
Right.
Okay.
Basically, this is our family farm, brother and I have been working with it for a whole career.
Wait, Rhonda, do you mind just coming a little bit closer, because we have people on Zoom, yeah, so just to pull up a chair and just kind of sit up here.
Just for those of you who don't know me, I'm Ray Vandebogart. We sold our dairy in two thousand twelve, and we can't retire, only three hundred some acres. We, we, no, that's fourteen years, we, this would be the six, it's been six times we've sold land, it's been one house built on it. And like, nice open space, most, it's all still being farmed, it's farmable. And, uh, so we're meeting our goals, providing some open space without anybody saying we have to. This is, uh, we're trying to divide off the house and gardens from the barns and the pastures, though, we've had a grass-fed beef operation Since we sold the dairy and then we could sell the barn and the pastures to somebody to carry on that same thing. My, my brother and sister have the farmhouse, so I'm trying to separate their, their lands, all under one deed, so. That's what this is all about, just the final. Contemplation of the, of a long-term plan.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions?
Well, so you, you wanna do it as a cluster, you wanna utilize the cluster subdivision?
No. Yeah, you're right.
Not that I know of.
You and I talked about this, but it might have just, so. I think the conversation started with, originally, you know, you asked what, how large, you know, what's the minimum lot acreage? So this zone district requires ten acre lot minimums. So. There's, eh, the, the subdivision ordinance allows a cluster subdivision. Review a proposal of, of, uh, land. And it doesn't give a number of lots to meet a cluster subdivision. Say, so in other words, if you have a hundred acre lot, divide that into ten lots. Of, of ten acre size, that's a conventional subdivision.
Yep.
Somebody could say, you know what, I wanna have nine, one acre lots and then one ninety-one acre lot. And they could do that as part of it, and that's it, that would be a true cluster subdivision, that would really look like a cluster subdivision. And that ninety-one acre lot could never be subdivided again. There's nothing in the ordinance that says there's a minimum number of lots to meet a cluster subdivision. And it looks like that it's been used before in the past for a one lot to a two lot. It does feel a bit odd because it's not really a cluster subdivision. Um, so as I said in my memo, it meets the letter of the law, but not quite the spirit of the law. Um, you know, if Ray said I wanna have two small lots and a one larger lot, that's more like a cluster subdivision, but. Um, the idea here is just having one smaller lot and then, and then one larger lot. Going, so, so just so you know, so this, this is not typically allowed as a sort of regular minor subdivision. By doing it as a cluster subdivision, it, it empowers the planning board to condition. The, the subdivision more than they would be allowed to with a minor subdivision. Not that they're going to, but they, but they could, and they, and they did on the Nelson Road property, you added a ten-foot vegetative buffer on the north side of that larger parcel. And you conditioned, um, you, you restricted the larger parcel from being subdivided. Uh, I don't know how many times, but, but you were able to say, you know, three more times or something. So by going through a cluster subdivision, you know, instead of saying, you know, we want a ten acre lot and a, you know, the balance of that lot. The planning board has less discretion and kind of what they can sort of, you know, place on it, but by asking for basically less than what the zoning requires. The balance is that the planning board can have a little bit more oversight onto the, the, the future of these parcels. Not that they're going to, but it's just so that you all know that, that's kind of where it will.
Greg, also, doesn't, isn't it required, planning board or not? That, that, that the large lot can't be subdivided.
Can or can't?
Cannot.
No, it, it can. It's still, but it's.
Oh, under a, well, if they maxed out, if they maxed out the number of divisions of the number, the original number. So like if they had, they have sixty-two now, so if they had five and one, then that one could not be re-subdivided. Because that would be the ten, that would be the sixty divided by ten.
So there's sixty-two now.
Right.
So you carve out five, and so you've got, you have fifty-seven acres left. And that can be subdivided again?
Yeah.
Because there was five, and can it be subdivided into ten acre lots?
Yeah, so. Think about it like, like credits, like credits, so.
Yeah.
With sixty-two acres, he has six credits. Essentially, he has road frontage, and there's no road frontage minimum, so you could, you could say, I wanna have six lots. There'll be a little, a little over ten acres, and you could go forward with a standard subdivision. He's choosing to have one of those credits, one of those lots be a little bit smaller. That doesn't mean he gets, even though this larger lot is fifty-seven acres, he still has only five credits.
Which in this case is weird because you could still get five ten acre lots out of that.
But they would have to be more than ten acre, but you, yeah, I guess you'd have to, yeah, so like, one could be ten.
Right, like this one, this one is like weird now.
Big shift, it's gonna be five acre credits and so I had. You know, I had over fifty, fifty lots available and I lose two of them.
Yeah.
You know, and now I'm down to well.
So, so what if the, what if the fifty-seven acre parcel got sold? Can that person?
Still can't be less than.
Hang on, can that person, so there's five credits left, right? Can that person do a two acre and have four credits left?
Yes.
But they have to go through all of those to do it.
Okay, and it passes on through the deeds, through, through the owners.
It, it would, it would be part of, it would be. You would ask, and this is what happened on the plat for the Nelson Road property, is it's put onto the plat. I don't know if it would, it'd be put into the deed, but the, may, maybe it would. But the, but at least the plat would show that, and it'd be a record.
Of what happened then.
Right.
And then it would, it would run.
Should be in a deed, yeah.
But that's up to the county, right? The deed isn't.
Right.
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I'm pretty sure by the time that would happen, it would be new rules.
Except it doesn't matter, right?
As I said, this is just, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta go.
A little bit of it, this is, this is a little bit odd, eh, again, it. Because there's a requirement for ten acre lots, and typically to deviate from that, you have to go through an area variance process, which is very difficult, it's a higher bar. But the subdivision ordinance allows this cluster subdivision, and it's been, it'd be one thing if it had never been applied before in Dandy. There might be more, let's say, to say, you know, it's just not, doesn't meet the spirit, um, but it's been done before, and I don't, I don't see a reason the planning board should deviate from that precedent. Yeah.
To then say to the next person, you can't do that.
Well, and it also meets the spirit of the comprehensive plan is that we're protecting larger areas while creating housing.
I keep thinking of devil's advocate, you know, ways this could kind of countering the spirit of the law, but. I guess in the end, it starts with the very first subdivision. You know, u- utilizing the, the cluster provision, and you can't really have more than. That number of houses, all to, of, uh, lots ultimately. Which is the same thing as if you didn't utilize cluster at all, except they all have to be at least ten.
Right.
Correct, plus this all, so there's nothing lost, there's no circum, there's no end around the spirit of the zoning.
It's kind of like a sloshing of credits a little bit, instead of having these six equal credits.
Yeah.
Some might be smaller and some would have to be bigger, you just, you have six lots.
Yeah, if you kept going with that scenario, where you chop off two and two and two, eventually the last guy's got a forty acre.
Exactly.
Which is still in this, actually, it's, yeah, not bad at all, it happened that way.
Into Collins, yeah, it actually, that, in a way, it does further a goal of, of protecting, kind of keeping a larger.
Area.
Lots, it's.
Also not, not everyone wants ten acres, that's all, it's a lot to maintain, one of those to do with the acres.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's where, Greg, the only, just, you know, Murphy's Law, I, I would double check with, um, the attorney, I forgot his.
Guy.
Guy. To make sure that this stuff, you know, if the, if it gets sold off, to make sure that, that nobody gets. Into a horrible legal mess ten or fifteen years from now, that that, that there are provisions. Such that it will be noted that that, that lot, if it gets sold, has restrictions on it. Yeah, it probably is, it probably is already figured out, but. I think it'd be worthwhile to just check and make sure, so that somebody doesn't think they can do something and then find out. That they, you know, they actually have restrictions on the parcel, cause it didn't get, you know, written, written down when it was sold.
I can check, what I'm, what I'm guessing is that deeds are private documents. And this is a public. Approval process and conditioning.
Like, like an easement would shop on a deed, but this is zoning, that, that you go to your municipality to learn. I don't, it's confusing.
Yeah, it still might be worth, I, I mean.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think probably everything's okay, but it, who knows?
Yeah, it might be worth asking, I think what it comes, so just, I'm thinking that if it's not captured on the deed. Um, it really just takes due diligence on the town's end, when, let's say, twenty years down the road. This person who owns fifty-seven acre says, you know, I wanna subdivide, do all this, it's due diligence on. The town's end too, to go through the town archives and, and thumb through past approvals and just, eh, eh, the little. Can be kind of cumbersome, and there can be, um, things that you didn't realize were, were, were in there, let's just start going through them, but. Um, I guess, I guess what you're asking is like, can it be captured elsewhere that it could come up, like, like a private deed?
Seems to me like it should be under the deed.
Yeah, let me.
It's like an answer.
Yeah, it, it might be worth following up, um. Just.
Like it's almost like the town has an easement, but it's not an easement.
Right, that was just. Well, and, but the problem is, only change, change, I just told them the last twenty years, it's gone from this number, this number, this number. So you put it on a deed.
Yeah.
We'll find out.
But then you can establish that it was put on the deed here, the zoning changed.
Yeah.
But the, if the reverse could be, could be really problematic.
No, but I think, but, but Ray, I actually think that's kind of what you risk with, with. And maybe the attorney will say something totally different, but I'm just thinking that. That's kind of what you risk about going down this process of a cluster subdivision by requesting a smaller than what's allowed area. And the planning board says, yep, we're gonna give you, you give five credits on this, this property, even if the town, I'm just wondering, if the town amends it. Does the zoning to be two acre lot minimums? Do you still have only those five credits, or do you now have? Or you should have.
Yeah, but they're not gonna go down, they're gonna go up. Anyway, I'm, I'm just saying.
What you're saying is that there are records, so.
But you don't need it on the deed, they have to come, you have zoning, they come and they, and they apply, and this is our zoning now.
Zoning changes.
And that, and that's that way everywhere, you know?
Right.
At the end.
Can you, Jordy, can you say that again?
Saying there are records in the town of what we have approved, and when things are asked. Years from now, people need to do due diligence to go back and find out. What was the thinking behind what we approved? So I mean, you can, there's no way to guarantee that there aren't gonna be glitches at some point, because things. Can change, zoning can change, things can change, but if we have adequately looked at what is presently there. And actually put it in writing somewhere why this decision was made this way, then it shouldn't be a problem.
I think, taking that further, what I'm wondering is. Is, are those five credits, i- is that legally binding, even if. Even if the, the lot minimums, let's say, get reduced, are you still bound by those five, because to me, that's. Risk about going down the cluster subdivision path.
The language.
There is, eh, eh, or, or, or are you, um. Or do those get wiped away if zoning changes and?
I think that's a question for the lawyer.
Exactly.
Yeah, but, but, but they go to twenty acre lots, now you have two, right?
So then, but, but that would be called vested rights, so that's, you would be, you would, I, I think you would still be allowed, yeah, you'd still be allowed to have. But.
Well, in that case, I should have fifty lots on my farm, because that's what they told me twenty years ago when I was on the planning board, and we did all these things, you know?
If you'd done it.
Anyway, I just had one more comment, if I.
Yeah.
This, this part I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep the original farmhouse, my relatives live there. And then this part is, has the infrastructure for rotation grazing system, there's improved roads everywhere, so you can drive your car right out there, the town could block through any mud. There's well-watered every paddock, and there's high tencel fence and dividers everywhere, you know, grass-fed operating operation. And that's an infrastructure I'm trying to keep, and then the barns go with it, and they're all designed for, for that purpose. Otherwise, I have no use for it.
Right.
Uh, well, Greg also wanted to mention, I really appreciated your email before the meeting that. Just gave me fifteen minutes of, or saved me fifteen minutes of fumbling around trying to find all this stuff. That was great, but it was much appreciated, while you explained and, and, and you attached the, you know. Zoning section and all that.
Good.
That's a, uh, and I did. Take a good look at the law, and in perpetuity is in the law. So, you know, just.
In perpetuity about what?
The land that's, that's not built on, when you do the cluster. Uh, I can find the section for you, if you want.
And that might be.
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, it doesn't matter a lot to us right now, but these things can end up being a super headache. Down the road, and I, I would just check with Guy and see what, what do you think should be done? You know, it gets sold, and then it gets sold again, and maybe again, and that, then that person wants to do something, and. Somebody finds out that, no, you can't, and it, it just becomes a big hassle. It just needs to be, it needs to be clarified as much as possible and recorded, and I don't subscribe. That twenty years from now, they're gonna say, oh, wait, maybe there was something, are you gonna do that with every subdivision? Look back and see if something, uh, somebody did something twenty years ago, no, you're gonna need. You're gonna need. Something that's in the documents that are extant at that time, so that's all.
Cause I, I think it was on, was it on Cottington?
I remember.
That one that, that we had to go back, they pulled out the, the previous resolution, and that was part of our package. I don't remember what it regarded exactly, but there was like restrictions that had been made before that we reviewed as part of the resolution.
No, that, and that, that's common, that's what I mean, is there are some things that do just continue to carry through. So, I, I'll, I wanna get some clarity on this too, cause there's, there's vested rights and then.
I have a weird question, um, if they were to subdivide the remainder of the property. Using cluster subdivision, would they have to cluster it next to this lot? I mean, cluster subdivisions, don't they have to be, the smaller lots have to be stuck together, or?
I don't think there's, there's any language of that in the.
What about cluster?
Well, the other thing I was wondering is, we're talking about applying it to the larger lot. But then could you also apply the same thing to the smaller lot, and then say like, well, actually now I want two two acre lots, and then that only leaves three left on the bigger one?
Right, is there a minimum lot, minimum lot size?
How do you determine who gets the credit, like?
That's what I'm saying. Right.
And I say, I wanna subdivide, I'm allowed to do at least one, or can I do a cluster, and you say, I'm sorry, you have no credits left, the person you bought it from has the rest of credits, credits to do the rest of their. Or do by me buying it, do I get credits, I think that should be, could be asked too, so like, more just to know, but just in case it comes up, like. Am I told when I buy it, like, okay, it's acres, but you cannot divide.
I think the parent parcel keeps the credit, so he'd be like the.
That's usually what it is, does everyone wanna flip to the appropriate page in the subdivision ordinance?
Education lesson here.
Well.
Thanks, Greg.
But they would know that they're not sharing that.
Good point.
Land. I mean, if, if, if these.
Like it's the larger.
These cluster subdivided residences can be spread out over the, over the sixty acres, then.
Oh, I see, it's.
It really didn't have.
If the parent kept the five acre lot, or the smaller lot, then that, yeah, that changes, visually changes everything sort of.
You can, I mean, so with these cluster divisions, the planning, I can't say enough, you have so much more discretionary approval, so. When the subdivision proposes, um, to develop a portion of the property. As clustered subdivision, the planning board may approve, modify, or disapprove the portions of the project and locations which shall be developed conventionally or clustered. So you could. Or disapprove the portions of the project and locations which shall be developed conventionally or clustered, so you could say. No, we want this cluster to be as, as a cluster. And on the plan, you can, you can absolutely require that, even if it's not.
Like future subdivisions have to be clustered, okay, interesting, not, not that I want to say that, but I do think that's interesting.
Or we could say that can never be developed, the big lot can never be developed. Or subdivided, well, let's see.
You can also restrict the subdivider to a lesser number of. Dwelling units or non-residential buildings, if the planning board judges that particular conditions of the site warrants a restriction. I, I, that's, I'm, I'm trying to explain it to Ray that. Yeah, you could, you can propose this, and I don't think the planner is going to be going over the top, but. By doing this, there's a balance that the planning board could really be very strict here and say, you know, you'll be getting two more credits, essentially. I mean, you, you can exclude areas out of, when you calculate these credits, you can exclude areas. To, to ex- exclude them from the calculation, if, if you, if it's in the opinion of the board that are, they're unsuitable for construction, um.
I think to stay within the spirit of the, something of the cluster. Provision, you, we should um, require if any further cluster or any further. Residences be built contiguous, close, close to contiguous to the five acre lot, otherwise. Otherwise, the cluster laws.
I asked if you lived on the same property as a prop, as a family member. I mean, I love my family and I wouldn't necessarily mind having them close, but I don't want to be clustered with them per se, I think that might be some of it.
Then don't use the cluster provision, you know, that, that. So, so as, as Jamie suggested, I think it's true, what's the point of having a fifty acre parcel with. Five houses spread out all over and have used the cluster division.
Yeah.
It's not, it's, it's totally against the spirit, they'd be better off to.
Completely up to the planning board, so there is not a requirement that I see to say it can be dispersed. The planning boards, if they really felt like in their judgment, we want you to cluster down here, because maybe there's very steep slopes, maybe there's. Very sensitive habitat, whatever, and I don't, maybe we could do it, do a site floor. Um, I do encourage you to look at this cluster subdivision. Page eighteen that I said, we threw it, the general procedures, there's buffer. There's buffer area requirements, you could require buffers, uh, building configurations. Um, there are other things, it might just be worth reading through them and just thinking about this.
Does the fact that he's farming on it, or, you know, like cattle and other stuff, does that mean that we have less of a say over it? And I mean, like, please, if it's using a, it's a working farm, and he's keeping those fences up and other stuff, does that?
It does.
And he's saying to what we can or can't tell him to do.
Doesn't by the law, but you, you could, based on your judgment that. Like, it's, it's just the planning board, it'll be a planning board decision of. Um, maybe you want to encourage that area to be, you know, more farming and you want to restrict houses from it or something, uh. But no, there's no law requirement about, or you're thinking like, what they can ag and markets kind of.
Right, yeah, they allow to just like, no, I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna cluster these over here, but I'm gonna keep this, because I want to do fence, you know, like what he was kind of describing. Is that a, like, we don't have a say in that, how they're dividing that out, you know, I mean, like, I just, I'm just saying, because he's doing ag and stuff. Doesn't matter.
No, that, a subdivision is about how land is used, not about what it's being used for. Um, you might think those are, those are interchangeable, how and what, but it's more about configuration of lots. Public, you, usually think about public infrastructure, there's no public infrastructure out here other than roads, um. But that's, that's the, the framework is how land is being used, rather than, you're not regulating what it's being used for.
Right.
So whether it's for ag, I mean, he could, he's saying he's selling it to a beef farmer, and I, 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 I believe him. He could change his mind in January when it's approved and sell it to a, somebody who wants to buy a nice estate in the country, uh, or it doesn't.
Or the beef farmer could sell it in a few years.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it doesn't work.
I mean, I agree with Colleen's point, I thought the same thing, that the spirit of the law is to maintain large chunks of land that are not developed. It's just, I worry that you were gonna say it's a cluster subdivision, and then it's just gonna get cut up into five, ten acre lots. Which is not a cluster subdivision at all, so I don't know, I just think it's weird to use the term, unless, but I, I'm.
Because they're not doing, they're not exercising it all at once, I think that's what's making it so weird, it's just exercising. A cluster of all his cluster durability.
And who knows what's gonna happen X number of years from now, I mean. My grandmother had a summer home years ago, it was, um, over a hundred acres. My parents sold part of it across the road after the war, because they needed to fix the house up. It has incredible spring on it, and so the spring was still. Something that the original house could use, even when it got sold and when my brother and I tried to sell. It was incredibly complicated because of how that had all happened, so it, we. I mean, I can't even remember the resolution, but the spring came with the house that was across the road, and the people that bought the property. At a farm and could use the spring as well, um.
Well, I was thinking about the, the cluster, I mean, the one downside, like you said, if, if you have to have access to county, like you said, all we do is provide roads. We don't have other, um, like sewage, I mean, you don't have built-in sewage and stuff. But if mine is in the back of the land, I mean, either I have to drive over everybody else's property to get to the outside road. Or they've got to figure out, like, we all have to come together and build like our own road that we maintain, so that everybody can get off the property. So if you don't cluster people at a road, then you're buying property that's basically boxed in, and you may or may not have the right to drive over the other person's property. Unless you did an easement or something, right, I mean.
You have to, yeah, so you have to, um, it's typically discouraged to have driveways be crossing. Uh, lot lines, uh, in some municipalities, they require actual easement and agreement between both. Deeds of the properties or. And to, to show their maintenance and agreement about the driveway, but Dandy doesn't require that, most towns in, in this area don't require, it's usually very like city kind of thing. And you have infrastructure, like usually sewer lines crossing. You have party wall agreements, you have things that are shared, where there's maintenance, because that's where lawsuits come into play, so we have more lawyers and.
Yeah.
In the background, uh, are you sure that? So, reading the law. I'm not so sure you can, or, or I think you can make the argument that you couldn't use the cluster. Provision more than once on a parcel, so, okay, you let this guy do his five acres. Using the cluster vision, he can either have, he can have one, two, three, four, or five. Uh, buildings clustered on that, but that's it, whatever he chooses. But I think if you look at the law, there's no. It's very strongly implied that you cluster and then the rest, they talk about open space and. The use of the land, I didn't see anything in there that said that's like credits that you can. You know, utilize on that property down the road.
Good question, I.
I mean, I think it's a viable argument, maybe wrong, but.
Yeah, because it's being used out of context, which is why it's so complicated and there's so many questions.
Yeah.
Cause you're not using it to the.
If this had never been done before, I don't know if I would be, if, if I would even want to entertain this with the planning board, be, or, because I, I think. The cluster subdivision provision is typically you take one lot, so this is sixty acres. And it would be Ray coming to the board saying, I have sixty acres, I want to create six lots. And instead of having six ten acre lots, I want to have five of them be three acres and with, uh, the six acre, the six would be. It's basically you're, 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 you're doing a subdivision of the entire property, and you're using all of your credits all at once.
Right.
And then you restrict future development on that larger lot.
Right.
Because Dandy has done it before where it's like this, I'm just not comfortable with changing that.
The whole point, I'm not sure, the whole point of a cluster subdivision is so that you end up with. A large, you know, chunk of acreage that's undeveloped. So you can't, we, we can't use the cluster subdivision to end up with just the opposite.
I thought the other incentive too is that it encourages like less impact on the environment, because infrastructures are closer together. We're not building longer driveways for this parcel that's back, like, I thought that was part of it too, is less. And it should be more cost efficient too, if it was all happening at once.
So these are good points, because you might, you might want to consider conditioning this plan. You know, i- if you're going to, if you think you might allow him to have this five acre with the existing farmhouse. Is there a balance there where you condition the plan and say, sure, but in this area, this is, this is where other homes are allowed, and then. In this area, you need to keep it completely without any, any more building. That's, you know, that's something that's completely available to you, you could also require that all dwelling units are in a, in a, in an apartment building. You have the power to say, you, you could have, you, you could have completely attached structures. You can say all six of your dwelling units need to be completely attached. I mean, there's so much, there, there's a lot of discretion that you have here that you don't have with other.
I could see, I could see it would be more useful though, if someone were to actually be building like more housing, but you're limited. Even with one of our larger parcels in town, you're not gonna get that many houses out of it, like, it's, I don't know. Like, like some of these things, like if, if we, I feel like I'm explaining it weird, but just to have more density. To protect more area, but we're still kind of carving out large chunks of land. Anyway, like five acres is still kind of a lot of land, like. And, and, and honestly, people who are here, most people move here for Cornell and are busy and. And not, I mean, that is really most what's, what's moving here, people don't move five acres, like, they're like, what am I gonna do with it? Not that, not that we have to cater.
I guess that's why I was questioning, like, the larger versus the smaller being the parent, because you could also take that five acre and say like, okay, that's gonna be. Your cluster, and if you subdivide ever again, like, you have to do it within that. Do it within the other fifty.
Yeah.
But then we can't do septic and like, I don't, they'd have to be really creative or share septic and then, I don't know.
Or, or you could, you could just hedge it a little and say, well, you could have one more five acre.
In the larger, the other, yeah.
Yeah, but that's, and a total of five.
You could do that, you know, you, instead of having the five credits be on that parcel A, you could say, you get. Two credits on parcel B and three credits on parcel A.
I think we have to do something like that, or it's, it's a joke, otherwise.
You could say, all the houses need to be built within three hundred feet of the road, so that the back part of the lot is completely untouched. I mean, and then you're at least balancing out this, this way to wiggle around the zoning requirement of the one. With actually having, uh, you, you, you're actually having some, some planning, I mean, you're.
It'd be nice with something we could replicate easily too, so that we're not putting a lot of restrictions on this guy, this is the first one, we're thinking about the most of them down the road. It makes more sense and we're, I don't know, like, it, it, like, road distance seems like an easy thing to kind of keep, keep in mind. When we're just otherwise looking at this huge parcel and just, I, I, that just seems like too much discretion. I just feel like people are gonna get mad at us some more lawsuits if we don't do it right, like.
I was like, what did we have to do in the rest of this meeting?
You don't even need to review the secret part one for now.
I say we're lead agents.
A second, we need to.
There's more of a demand than lotion.
That I drew up for lead agency?
Yes.
Okay.
And I seconded that.
Okay.
Yeah. And.
And the draft. Yeah, between now and next meeting, could we have a, a little input from Guy on some of Scott's questions?
Yeah, I have, right now it's two credits for cluster subdivisions, sort of run with the land, even if the zoning.
Yeah.
Lot minimums change, and then can cluster subdivisions be used multiple times on the same property? Um, it'll stir up a lot of conversation with, with Guy, I'm sure, about this, um. So, okay. Oh, did you all vote on?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
We're taking. Yes.
Okay.
Um, do we? We can review this next month before we did third, or before we schedule a public hearing, right, because you'll come off a public hearing until January and.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, for to do, do, uh, oh, to.
The discussion item, I think, just since we're asking Guy questions, unless you, unless we don't have answers from Guy, and then we can defer it to October.
Okay.
We still won't take action, but it's we're having the conversation, we'll keep it somewhat fresh in our minds.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's good, because then it gives you time in those few months to think about this, maybe there's.
Yeah.
And then you can use this as an example if other people want to do this.
Right.
Um, because maybe.
And then come back in January and be like, wait, why do I have to wait four more months to get my, my book, and you guys waited till now to ask your question?
And it might be a good solution, you know, people do gripe about, you know, there are some people that have, that are worried about, and they're, they feel hurt by some of the large. Lot minimums, I get emails multiple times a week, and people that will do their whole life and they're just looking to sell up a couple acres, make some money and. So maybe there's a way to do it in a, in a balanced approach where they get that, but then there's some planning and thought that really goes into that.
Well, because there are, I'm, I'm guessing people that have lots of land and they, that's part of their retirement.
Exactly.
Is being able to sell, so if we get too restrictive, it's.
Push a lot of locals away.
Like farmers.
Yeah, people don't know, you know, I mean, people who did that. Didn't anticipate the kind of changes we're talking about, so I think we need to find some balance in how we're looking at all this.
So maybe the cluster provision would allow us to be flexible enough. To help people out and. You know.
Yeah, and maybe we can find out.
But you have to have the, so you have to have the, the average density though. So for instance, somebody asked me today, just today, they said, there's a fourteen acre lot, I know the owner's very well. My wife and I've lived here for thirty years, we're just looking to build a small log cabin as our retirement place, it's just off West Miller, um. And, uh, and it's fourteen acre plot, it's a required ten acres, and I said, you can't subdivide it, you, you would have to be twenty acres. Cause with twenty acres, then you could do it, this cluster, you could have a smaller lot and do a, a balanced larger lot, but. So I'm gonna work with that, that person on finding other land, because I'm not gonna explore that.
Yeah, it's tough, and then also I don't think there, then there's parcels left in Ithaca that where you could do another, like. A subdivision, like an actual subdivision, like they're, right, if we. Who, who owns a park that's big enough to put in twenty houses or something, you know?
That density of housing.
Yeah.
Where you can do it as a planned development zone, like Old Town Village is a.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it just doesn't seem like with, with the zoning as it is, there's, there is no plan, I guess, like, no. I'm sorry, everyone's like, we're at the end of the meeting.
Some of these Hamlet neighborhoods, I mean, there are some people in the Hamlet neighborhood, again, no lot minimums.
Right.
Eighty, eighty acres, the road, right across the street here, or right over here, eighty acres, I mean, they could have a. Right across the street here, or right over here, eighty acres, I mean, they could have a, a, it could be a real Hamlet neighborhood. Um, but.
Okay.
And planning just develops, that like takes you down a whole other road of. Lack of restrictions, but you have that trade off. You have to give, yeah, and it's a process.
Yeah, I'm gonna pick you up in the school.
Can I just give a brief plan on that? I just, I wanna let everyone know, and I did see that Joel unmuted himself, but Joel, we do, I think the chair has to leave in five minutes to pick up the kiddos, so. Um. I just wanna let everyone know that. Um, I had, I had intended, so I told the town board last night that I wanted to. Start the process of reviewing the comprehensive plan with you all. I was about to print off the entire comprehensive plan today, but before I waste about three hundred pages of paper. I wanna just ask, th- does anybody have a copy of the comprehensive plan already? No, um, I'm happy to, to print copies off, um, but if, but if, if there's folks that would not wanna a, a copy, I can have that ready next time, just let me know. And just tell me, you'd just rather review it electronically, my thought. My, my, my.
I can.
Okay.
I can do it.
Okay, so my, my thought is that in these next few months this year, um. Is that, uh. We go through the goals and we just check off, have these been done? Have these not been done? Are these still relevant? Are, sh- should there, you know, just sort of look at the goals that are in the plan, it's a, a twenty year old plan. I think go about it that way, I'm, I'd have to yet work with the town board about the structure of how the comprehensive plan gets updated, there's sort of a lot that we're going to do about a committee forming. Maybe some of the planning board members and the town board members, but I do wanna start the process off, the planning board is considered the keeper of the comprehensive plan, so. I think it's just, uh, it's. It, it should start with the planning board, just to look at, so carving out some time every meeting, I think, um, for the remainder of the year, just to go through some of those goals. That being said, I won't be at September seventeenth planning board meeting. Um, I'm taking my first week of vacation off in the last year, uh, that week, so I, I won't be there. The only other update that I wanna let everyone know about, and I'll send an email about this, is. The, the, the annual upstate APA planning conference is gonna be hosted here in downtown Ithaca, downtown Ithaca Conference Center. October ninth through eleventh. Um, the schedule, we just developed a draft schedule today. And I let the town board know last night that I would be requesting use of funds to send. Some amount of people, I only have a certain amount of budget and it's up to the town board how much they, they might um allow. Um, but I think it, it's, it'd be a great training opportunity, remember, everyone needs four hours of training, this would be easy, one stop shop. Um, to go, you could go on one day or you go to full conference and everyone works, so it's might not work out that way. We also might be able to get a planning board pass where you could just kind of, you go to a session in the morning, you hand it off to another planning board member. So, I'm gonna just look out for an email for me, first of all, our email is working, everyone getting my email? No?
It's, it's my fault, I, I started really busy, I'm, I just need to call.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, all right, cause I wanna.
You have to like verify to get in or some, it's authenticate, I don't know, there's like, I'm still this, it's, it's my fault.
Okay, why don't you give me a call tomorrow or call Mariah tomorrow, cause, cause she's helping everyone out.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
But everyone else is getting emails?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And do you track our hours? Cause I think I already have done four hours for this year.
If you get to send it, like, just let me know, here's, but here's what I have.
I've pretty nearly that much time, so I could.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna send everyone an email probably tomorrow or the next day with a draft schedule, it just came out today. Um, and just let me know what your interest is, I can guarantee that I can send you, but just say, yeah, interested in going or no, I, I don't care. Um, and let me know the days, and then I can go back to the town board and sort of tally up all the money that would be needed to send people. Well, it's, it's noon Wednesday through noon on a Friday.
Okay, so we could just split up. Have one thing and people go different days or.
Sure, but if somebody is like, I really wanna go and I'll get credit, my work to go or something, um.
I wish.
Yeah. Think it's some of the landscape.
I would say if anyone is planning a conference. Don't plan it in September or October. I literally have a conference schedule from the third of September through like the nineteenth of October.
Well, that's why we scheduled it all, we're like, October ninth through eleven.
Yeah, it's like, nonstop. I'm not going to all of them, obviously, cause I can't, but.
Out of town?
Oh, yeah, it was like LA, Milwaukee, they're all.
You have to go to LA.
I'm not going to those, I'm not going to all of them, but it's just like.
Kelly, are you going from like one conference to another?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, my husband is for like three weeks, yeah.
That would be weird. But, but that's, look out for that email and.
Okay, okay, I know.
Call me.
Rick, those webinar, the webinar that I.
I'm gonna close the meeting, thank you, everybody, thank you. You can still talk to him.